In Coleman Bean's order at 4:30, right? Please rush the touch of interest. Is the applicant for 127 Main Street here? Alright, I'll prepare later on the agenda, please. One may or two.
We are. And we've got a chairman that does the architecture, who does follow suit. So, if we... You guys are familiar with the architecture of the building?
Yes.
So, we just redid last week. We were at H Bar and they had some... We got pretty close to... They have a couple of minor architectural issues they have to review. From the site perspective, uh, let's call it... We have wrought iron fencing, which is in the community. We have a stone veneer on the backside of the walls, which will be on the building. And the site should be consistent. We're taking some trees down, we're bringing some trees back. The playground surfacing is going to be artificial turf. That's what animal kids jumping around. So, they didn't have any challenges with the playground, so they're... Um, maybe I'll pass. I didn't make six copies, but I will...
We'll be there.
Yeah, we'll start with the playground, so there's no...
Is it separate from what was...
What's that?
Is it separate from the putouts? Is it newer than the putouts?
Yeah, these are newer updates. Don't mind. It would be okay if I started with the playground.
Let me start anywhere you want.
So, uh... So, the two pieces of playground equipment, one is multi-level for kids with all abilities. And we have one at grade for those that don't have, they can wheelchair and walk up. And non-climbing. And we have a little paved area here where we can put little furniture and bench. This is the limits of the safety surfacing, so if you fell off the roof, this artificial turf is totally accessible. This is fenced in with a gate here. And then there's a gate... There's another secondary gate area between the building. That gate for kids to separate two areas. And then outside, the double gate system, you have circulation. As we discussed last time, parents would come in, drop off in one of the four spaces here. And we have one fifth drop-off space as an overflow. And the kids would walk in, when the parents check in, the parents would leave. And then the kids would go into the playground area here. So, this is... This is the non-access... The fully accessible piece of playground equipment. First piece. And this is the accessible piece of playground equipment. These are the at-grade panels. Some are engineering, some are flowers, different types of things. Here's kind of that overall. This is the kids... The accessible kids can climb on. And this is the fully accessible. Limited fully accessible. It's kind of that is... So, Kendra and Amy, we're just coming down to final colors, but it's probably most... It's gonna have some browns in it, brown, dark browns. We're not trying to make a nice cream cone or something, neon. It's still gonna be interesting. There's gonna be some color. I thought we're trying to keep it not over the top, not too bright.
Well, we have less to say on the aesthetics than age-wise.
Yeah, so they kind of... They like it. I just wanted to... You know, that's the basis... Basis of the project. So, that's the playground.
Which is... Oh, okay, you are good there.
So, any questions on playground? We're good with playground?
No, we're good with the parking lots, because I think this all fits within the requirements.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that's come along.
What could happen to me for the kids, like number fifteen?
Uh, the name is here, it's not the number of kids.
Uh, I think it would get the age issue to me.
Okay, so do you think five spots are enough for pickup and drop-off?
We talked about that. We are thinking based on when, you know, A, how quickly we're gonna be dropping off. And B, they're not all coming at the same time. So, your thinking is going to be okay?
Okay.
The site is very well suited here at the end of the one-way move for East five. After that...
But there are spots behind too, right?
Yeah, there's... Yeah, there's other places that you would need to... Like Kendra said, I think what's gonna happen is it's not a school of 600, where you're gonna hit that feedback up, or a school of 260 kids, you're gonna get a... You're gonna get a control.
Yeah, and then you're gonna have a couple of shifts at least, uh, people working, so...
Yeah, everybody's not going... It's not a blue-collar facility. Everybody's punching a frog at eight o'clock, you know?
Right.
It's kind of like a... With the patterns, people are coming in.
I assume you can be flexible if it turns out that at certain hours there's a crowd.
Yeah.
There are other spaces that you could...
Other spaces dedicated to...
And it is a daycare, so there's gonna be monitors. It's not gonna be a surprise that they don't think of the parents and the kids in there. So, I think Amy's ready for that.
Okay.
That works at this company. Uh, just to give you an impact, this is existing conditions. This is what's out there now in this...
Surprise, right?
That's the drive. All that pavement's gonna be redone. And the playground's all gonna be redone. So, what's happening is these trees are gonna be downed. All this asphalt's coming out.
So, you're simply adding the four spaces.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
And sorry, we're not changing any of the other parking. Anywhere with the exception of adding forty, or a drop-off space there. The reason we're digging so much asphalt is the water and sanitary line is probably as old as the building. So, it's like, now it makes sense now to replace those lines more quickly. The water line, we'd probably tap it in a different location and go under the road. And then the sanitary line, because it's grab, we don't have a lot of flexibility. Replace it. So, that's... Kind of that's going. Uh, we are doing some... The power source, we're still working on with Sage. Power sources, we're still working on, whether it transforms or not, so the power comes in. And that's really it on power and circulation. And just these two tan lines, those are retaining walls to provide at-grade egress to the building, because the front of the site's a little higher than the back. So, we need this wall to retain the grading and provide egress to the back portions of the building. And then, that's what we talked about with H Bar. There's gonna be a stone face to the wall on the outside here, the outside here. And that stone face is gonna pull across architecturally. We started with the wall section here. We go around the back of the building. There's a high... A wall that's four or five feet tall. And then when you come around to the drop-off area, the wall, basically the wall on the backside of the sink. So, we're still working on this. Four... Three foot, three and a half foot wall on top. It's for safety, so it's to be able to go off the top. So, that's really, really in a nutshell, if there's anything. Things from a site perspective, we're probably ninety percent of all our ideas are on the drawings. The last ten percent is coordinating specifications and construction details.
This isn't an R2 residential district?
Safe.
Just to verify, clarify something.
Yeah, just to set it. While you're looking at, we also have a lighting photometrics plan. Basically, the person that did the original lighting plan for the whole facility, provided a document showing light levels. So, we do a light plan, mostly because that is like the light to dissipate out of the fire real. And so that's... I have that document. I think that's digitally... The only exterior light we're really changing on this thing, we have to move one light four feet over to accommodate one of the entrance gates. That's one change. And the other changes were, I think we're adding one or two wall-back lights in one of the entrances.
Is that additional on the back where the emergency exits?
Yes, yes, for emergency. And then those lights will... Those building-out of lights will have light shields on the... On the strike point, the light will go down, and you'll have shields. Then we can have strike point, and I do that.
Okay. Okay. Just make sure we don't overlook the elephant in the room or whatever for all the details. So, R2, that these structures, these playground equipment, are they classed as structures under zoning law?
Yes.
So, are they more than twenty feet back from the property line for the front yard? To build a structure in the front yard, so we're gonna want to be sure. The reason that... So, if...
It's twenty... It's just to answer that question right out of the gate. That's thirty feet from that pencil point. Let's do about, I'll do twenty feet, about at thirty feet. We have twenty... Yeah, we have twenty.
So, you're...
We're maybe twenty-two or twenty-five.
You don't need a zoning variance, because I'm sure if we allow you to do something, somebody in Cooperstown would say, "Well, you passed it, you know, violated." And then why can't I put... Because we have...
No, that's your bone, I understand.
We have enforced law against people who want to put up a playhouse in their backyard within the side... You know, the side yard or the rear yard. So, you gotta treat everybody alike equally. So, I just want to be sure that those are not in the front yard setback, because they are over the height restriction, which I think is eight feet.
Are we on right feet?
Playground structures, yes, they have shelters.
With a roof on, yeah, they're...
Yeah, they do.
Okay, so, all right, okay, so that...
This is... This one's twenty-five, this is twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Great, great.
I'll put a dimension on the plan, just so we have it. No, I want... We want to be compliant.
Then the other thing is, I haven't seen on your site plan, maybe it is there right into arrows for... Because there's the specific entrance and egress, the way the traffic flows. This was discussed thoroughly when we first did Harrison House, because of the traffic implications on our feeder street, whether you enter and how you exit and so forth. So, there's no change in that...
No change in the circulation.
In the circulation, but I think it should be rewritten on the site plan. Should be approved in site plan.
We could add some...
Yeah, we can add that.
Should arrows on the pavement lines, and there is a sign, right?
There is signage at the doors.
And entrance and exit.
Yeah, we're not changing anything in the right-of-way. You know, so right now you have the curb, the sidewalk, the entrance and the exit signs.
And no signs are still gonna be there.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no change in that.
But we can certainly add, I know you're saying, an arrow. If someone were to pull out of a space, at least they would see the traffic arrow during that. Or around, anyway. But, yeah, we could do that.
You guys follow me?
Okay. And then, probably the last question I have, this is a... Does this qualify as a school, daycare versus...
It's a trial facility, it's not an educational facility.
It's not a school, not a school?
No. It's daycare is separate from a school for education.
Because I'm wondering, um... Because of the issue of children in this building and so forth, if there were to be a fire, fire trucks would have to pull in to put out the fire, rescue children, what have you. So, that driveway around it, would that be considered a fire lane?
That's exactly why we're...
And therefore, do we need any signage to affect it? No idling, waiting, sitting there or whatever, you know, because that's what parents tend to do.
Well, they...
Because it's a fire lane, no parking.
Well, it's not only is it a fire lane, but it's gonna have a set of gates on it. And the gates will be shut.
But they're even the road around the back.
Like you know it around the back.
The road all the way around that, because that's adjacent to the building. The parking's on the outside, adjacent on the inside.
I mean, we've never had people sitting there for any reason.
But you haven't had a building full of little kids?
No, we have not.
So, I'm just throwing this out as something just to be...
Yeah, we can certainly monitor that and make sure that you don't have any issues with that. But I don't think that...
You know, you see often, now, the way you're having, it's gonna be much more intermittent than at 4:30. You're gonna have twenty cars lined up, or like over at the school where everybody lines up their cars, except their kids, this and that. It won't...
Right.
I'm not suggesting that, but sometimes if there's insufficient parking in those five slots that you have...
Yeah, and I think what we had talked about, I think we have those designated spots, but we also... There's a parking lot right there too. So, I think if we find we're having issues with backup, we will designate additional, designate additional parking spaces, these must be parking spaces for daycare.
Okay, because you don't want people stopping and putting cars where it's a code of fire lane. And they would be... Okay.
I think it's a different type of use, as we stated earlier, that a ride will pick up. It'll have people coming for shift work.
Right.
In that position, somebody has a 6:00 AM shift, an 8:00 AM shift, a 10:00 AM shift, so...
And somebody goes grocery shopping after work, or...
Yeah.
Okay. So, just wanna think through...
You can throw what you see on the safety.
But those, you know, signage, you know, I do a lot of K-12 school, or, you know, sometimes you... I say, you gotta start, the base has to be safe. And if you have to add an extra monitor or some signage, or some markings, it's... It's hard to design a perfect, but this is sound design, you know, it's off the complete path. The drop-off areas all the way at the end, the drop... You know, if you have a state, the drop-off area is at the beginning and back at the street, that would be a problem.
Yes.
If the drop-off was in the middle, the kids were crossing, that would be a problem, I think. I think it's a very good retrofit, but maybe we have to tweak it a little bit. It's not supposed to be a long...
Yeah, it'll always be separate from the portion. The gates that block the fire lane, are they electrical, mechanical, or are they manually updated?
We're working on that. We're working on that, we, we originally were thinking hand hold, but that, I think, I think so long as, should the power fail.
Right, one.
So.
Yeah, and yes, yes, absolutely.
And that's something we took, we took out of the fire department, the hand hold, they, they have a key to override. Are we, how do you want to open it? They're gonna be run air, we're networking, we're gonna make sure that you have the, we were talking about slide gate, slide gate doesn't make sense, because then you'd be sliding into the playground.
Right.
We're talking about one gate, but you can't have a single gate, because then it would close off, close off the pedestrian. So we came up with a double gate, each leaf would independently swing open or shut, and then, because of the kids, they're gonna have the connection both. So if they are open and you want, you have a special, and you want to keep them open, you can have something, passing gates, so you can't move them. And then the other thing is to put the apparatus, the mechanical on the outside, because there's a chain and things like that, you don't want that to be inside the playground. The outside, that's why we have one of these light poles, because everything is happening right there, so, yeah. One light pole. So we're working, working on that. But the, but the front, the front curb, the front sidewalk, the, the existing columns, the existing fence, the existing vegetation, all of that remains the same. The same noting that's really changing is the water line comes into the pavement, that'll be cut, and that'll be redone, and sanitary line will be cut and redone. And then, so essentially, it's right away, they got this existing plant buffer, it's pretty, pretty good for construction.
Where does this start with, is this special use permit?
Um, okay.
Did you get the special use permit yet?
What, you didn't have a meeting?
Yes, okay.
Was granted?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Were there any, were there any conditions?
I don't think so, not that I recall.
The thing that happened was the, the first meeting went to each park without a site plan, and then we went to special permit, and now we're here. And then we went to each park, and so we have that order, we, we cut up now.
So the trustees, the trustees had the public hearing on the special.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes. They did, so we did everything.
I just have to take a look at that order once, see, because if there are any conditions.
I don't recall.
But I don't think there.
Okay, great.
Chris, do you have that?
No, I don't have it actually, but I, I remember it was as proposed.
So no, no, they just put on the permit?
Okay. All right.
So you have to vote to approve the, the plan, the site plan, or?
We, any, any more questions?
No.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, we, we moved, we have your first case. Moved that conceptual approval, moved, grant conceptual approval? Second, something, oh, sorry, okay, I, one favor.
Hi.
Okay, it's your first, um, the second, next step is to set a public hearing. And are there any changes that need to be made in terms?
Well, I would, I'd like to put the dimensions on there, so we have that covered, I'd like to make a formal submission, a main line on there, and what's the dimensions?
They have to be submitted before the notice of the public hearing goes out. If you could do this within a couple of days?
Yeah, yeah.
By Monday?
By Monday, it'll be submitted by Monday.
Just thinking of the holiday coming up, so.
The only, the only thing that would be subject to change beyond that would be, you know, the gates are moving utilities, but the footprint of the building is set.
And the, the.
The sidewalk, the, everything you see on the.
The site plan, the, the parking, all of that, the lighting is on there.
Lighting, I have, I didn't submit that, but I have that, but Google's gonna have it.
But it's not changing from what's currently on the site, so it's not.
Moving one pole four feet, and then adding a couple of building matters for us.
Right, right.
I mean.
Our next schedule meeting is December nineteenth, is that the date okay for the party? I don't think we're traveling.
I'll probably, it will be there, probably there, definitely, probably, we love to be there.
Okay, okay.
So that's when the public hearing will be?
Well, I, I'm going to have a public hearing on this.
On the second.
December nineteenth.
Second.
That's working, a good time for today.
And if there were no comments or no comments, would be great excitement, I feel, and would everyone more meeting after that?
No, we, we could grant it, that's a meeting, even if there are comments.
Okay.
You can take, we'll take comments into consideration, and we'll, we'll negotiate with you, the, the plan, and.
They're gonna negotiate, she's ready.
And hopefully we'll be able to include it, that being.
Right, great.
So for the drawings, do you need to submit the electronic to you, or do you want hard copies?
I need, I need hard copies.
Okay, so hard copies by Monday, and full size, or do you want, want that size?
I, I.
Or do you want like the alone by seventeens?
So how soon can you get full size then?
I can print those in my office, so we can have them on.
Maybe we do one, maybe we do one full size set, and then six, six, eleven by seventeens.
Yeah. I think that's fine, one set for the record, and then the others, yeah.
Because once the notice goes out, anybody who watches see the plans, they're coming to the office, they're all excited.
Yeah, they can, they'll have these. And I'm, the only thing, is the playground images are those important, that, that's sufficient, because they're still working as well as.
Uh, the best you have at the time.
Okay, I could, what I could do is I could put those on a sheet, and I was putting up final color. The, the structures aren't gonna change, what's gonna change now is.
Well, as long as the, as long as the structures are the same, the color.
We don't care about colors.
Color doesn't matter for the site.
Yeah, if there were an H part here, and maybe color would, no, it doesn't, it doesn't even matter.
No, it's, there's subtle changes in this.
Colors don't matter in our law.
Yeah, we're talking about adding a, a maple leaf and some circles to the term, line, line.
But no, it's, it doesn't, it's, it's no bearing on our.
Okay, no, I just wanted to. Look at your photometrics plan, playground images on a sheet.
It's really just to show what kind, you know, emblematic of, of H part, there's no structure, we care about heights and size.
Yes.
Like.
Like.
Good, good, why?
Yeah, we'll leave it for this.
Great.
Okay, this, this is not what I want.
What is, what is the deadline for?
It's not what I want, I was just, um, I missed a question, I'm sorry.
The deadline for the, um, the, just two days or four?
Uh, I said that, I believe, I'd have to look it up.
We're gonna, we'll just make sure that.
I will make sure, I will.
Yeah, okay.
In a timely fashion, for sure.
I'll notice, go into newspapers and stuff. So, any questions for us?
I think we got a good plan, good. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Be careful getting home.
Yes.
Yeah, slow and easy. Get her, it was twenty-nine on Cerberus, I get her, it was like twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and when I went up to the elevator, it was like thirty-three, I was like, yes. No daisies.
Thank you.
All right, see you.
Usually, it's something about so far, that, still, you can know.
Has everyone had a chance?
We're worried.
It's a pile.
Do you have the side on the side, which is there?
Can I show, uh, camera the playground, the pictures off there?
Go ahead.
I'll get the file ones on Monday.
That's fine, that's just fine, thank you.
Is this one also, this is me?
Um, that's actually, I think, one of our older.
Older?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Just, we'll just give you a, a couple of things together.
Okay, I had no changes on the.
Excuse me, okay. I think we have more, we have sort of a.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
A second, or a favor?
All right.
Can I have this? All right, uh, on twenty-seven, five.
The dimensions are seven by three in that fifth.
That's it.
Um, the, um, it would be lighted upon sundown. I don't see an issue with that.
I assume it's, it's existing.
That's what it says, existing sign access, but. Pictures. I don't have, I don't have any issue with this. Richard is my expert on the science though, so.
It, it, it doesn't, oh, okay, there's light fixtures on the building.
That already exists, too.
I think they're, they're not directed on the sign.
Not currently, but they will be.
But, um. Usually, I think usually we'd want to see what, they kind of just replace the light bulbs, and it says, with new.
LED soft white light bulbs.
I guess the question is, which direction is the light being directed, is it, it's directed down on the sign? Usually, you have fixtures over the top of the sign shining down on the sign.
They'll hardly shine, I think they'll hardly twist it up and shine it down the sign.
That's it.
There's one at the top of the sign.
So do we wanna say that the light, we need?
More information.
Example of what type of light fixtures to, in the task, ask people to submit, you're, you know, usually people that show up, a light fixture, where they're rounded on the building, it's shining down on the sign, because. I can't remember, but, give us light, diffuse light going up into the, in the sky. The applications to this, the suddenly built it will pay the price needed for forward update for those. If I assume they contemplate that, additional information, before we go on this. Well, I, we're not really terribly concerned about the paint color or how it's painted, but I think the light fixtures on the sign are the key thing, I think.
Well, yeah, I, I, I get your point about the, because they certainly wouldn't be dark sky compliant. So I think we should say, light fixtures need to be dark sky compliant per the, the regulations, I, I'll refer to that. So, the light fixtures would need to be moved and mounted above. Above the sign to go down on the sign.
I mean, now that, so that the, they're, they're directed at the sign and downward, basically.
Right, so we can't, we can't tell from this how, how it's going to be lit? That we need more information on that, how it will be lit? Where the light fixtures are mounted, because right now, it doesn't appear to be, the lighting is on. At all.
I don't, I don't think we can approve it until soon.
No, but, but we should still give some feedback, so that, yeah.
Yeah, I think, no, yeah.
Um, I mean, no problems with the dimensions, um, but the lighting needs to be clarified. And Chris, you can certainly take our feedback.
Sure.
Uh, so we should have to come back to hear it from us again, for the changes here.
You feel it's just shining, oh, for what?
Right, and that, and that's not.
It's not.
Um, final parallel, is that correct?
When we turn the application.
Pressure of science.
It's a magic.
And Chris will.
I will come, yeah.
So just, come to the next meeting.
Yes.
Because if you're here today, it's could be approved.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I want to return.
Second.
One favor.
I, you return to focus, please.
Thank you very much.
So on the nineteenth, the progress market is having a, um, a hobby market from three to seven P M. And I'm organizing sort of holidays tool for the, um, the major parties to stay with, for the.